Wait, now you have to switch places.
I open this meeting of the Licensing Commission at 6:30 PM. Clerk, will you please call the rule?
Chair Rabindran.
Here.
Vice Chair McLean Talk.
Here.
Commissioner Fallen-Weider. Commissioner Primo.
Present.
Commissioner Roland.
Here.
Chair, we have quorum.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Did everyone have a chance to look at the agenda? Do we have any changes to the agenda? And with that, do we need to vote to approve the...? No. Great, then we approve the agenda. And did everyone get a chance to look at the minutes of the June 12th meeting? Any concerns? Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Great. Wendy, did you get that? Great. And then we do take a vote. So all those in favor, please indicate by... I gotta set this. There you go. Okay. Please cast your vote. And I think we're all done. Thank you.
The vote is for, in favor, the motion carries.
Thank you. Great. If you wish to address the authority under public comment, please sign in on the public speaker form before they call to order of this meeting. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. The authority is not authorized by the Colorado Open Meetings Law to discuss, comment, or take action at the meeting or on any issue raised by public comment that is not part of tonight's agenda. The chair may refer the matter to staff to obtain additional information and report back as appropriate.
No one has signed up.
Thank you. Is there any general business? Thank you. Any probable cause pre-renewal preliminary hearings? Excellent, thank you. And with that, we will start with Licensing Commission Resolution 05-2024. LC Resolution Approving a Liquor License Application for Angela LLC DBA Taj Mahal Indian Cuisine and Bar located at 5350 South Santa Fe Drive, Unit Number C, Littleton, Colorado 80120. Is the applicant present? Hi. You're welcome to join us here. Would you mind raising your right hand?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give before this authority is truthful?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm gonna open the public... Do you want to present your application? Or...
I sent you all the information in the packet. You can ask questions from there.
Great. I didn't know if you had an opening statement or something that affect on your application. You can put your hand down.
Thank you.
No worries. Do you want to tell us a little bit about your facility?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, I like... I applied for the liquor license. I mean, I wish if I can have that.
Yeah, no, I get that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Great. Does anyone... Does any of the authority members have a question?
The restaurant's currently in operation and he's just adding a liquor license.
Perfect.
Just interestingly, I see that you're called Taj Mahal Indian Cuisine and Bar. So you had plans to have a liquor license from early on, correct?
Yes, sir.
And thank you for joining us tonight and for going through the whole application process. I just wanted to check and make sure I saw one piece correctly. Did you conduct the neighborhood assessment yourself?
Yes, I did.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Concerns? I will entertain a motion. Is there a motion?
You can sit down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
You have to open the public comment.
Oh, sorry. I'm gonna open public comment, but I see no one has put their name on the public comment. And seeing none, I will close the public comment at 6:36. Is there anyone who didn't sign up?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna call for that motion now.
Let me take a breath.
Yeah, good luck.
I move to approve LC Resolution 05-2024, which grants for Angela LLC DBA Taj Mahal Indian Cuisine and Bar, 5350 South Santa Fe Drive, Unit C, Littleton, Colorado 80120. A hotel and restaurant liquor license subject to approval by the Colorado Liquor Enforcement Division and based upon the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood, the desires of the adult inhabitants as evidenced by petitions, remonstrances, or otherwise, and all other reasonable restrictions that are or may be placed upon the neighborhood by the local licensing authority.
Second.
And with that, I'm gonna ask a call for the vote. Please cast your vote. Clerk?
You have to close it. The vote is for, in favor, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And then our second item on the agenda is LC Resolution 06-2024. Approving a liquor license application for Denver Beer Company, Littleton LLC DBA Denver Beer Company, 2409 West Main Street, Littleton, Colorado 80120. Is the applicant present?
Yes, we are.
Thank you. And you are?
Yes, Robert Runko, Attorney Registration 41932, on behalf of the applicant this evening.
Excellent. And is the applicant going to speak as well?
Yes, we have the applicant here as well as the petitioner.
Excellent. And can I have you all raise your right hand while I ask you this very important question? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before this authority is truthful?
I do.
Thank you. Excellent. Do you want to present?
We'll start with Mr. Maroni from Alcohol Petitioning Services.
Okay, sounds good. Good evening. Patrick Maroni here, President of Alcohol Petitioning Services. We are engaged to do the neighborhood survey for the Denver Beer Company located at 2409 West Main Street in Littleton. So a little bit of our methodology of how we do this survey, our circulators are 18 or older in this case. With them, they had a clipboard with a petition form. They had the Littleton City Clerk's boundary map with them and also a tally sheet to record when the petition did not get signed. So each person that was approached was shown the petition form, the map of the designated area, and asked to read the form and were verbally told of what kind of license was being applied for. In this case, it was a brew pub. The site location and other licenses that are similar in the area. Each person who signed the form did so and indicated they were an owner or manager of a company or a business, were 21 years or older, or a resident that was 21 years or older in the designated area. Each signature was obtained freely, voluntarily, without any kind of influence from a circulator. We are a non-biased company. We did a circulation on Tuesday, July 30th with five circulators. Initial results were we received 82 signatures, 18 from businesses, 64 from residences. Of the 18 businesses, 17 were in favor, one was opposed. Of the 64 residences, 60 were in favor, four were opposed. So a total of 77 in favor, five opposed, which is about a 94% approval. The five people that were opposing, three said there were enough brew pubs or breweries in the area. One person said there was plenty of liquor licenses in the downtown Littleton area. And one said they were a nonprofit for addiction and were opposed to the license being issued. So we obtained 82 signatures. 262 times residents did not answer the door, so not home or did not answer. 51 people were not willing to sign. Five businesses were either closed or vacant. And 18 times, the manager or owner was not available to sign the petition. So a total of 418 attempted contacts. Of the 51 people that were not willing to sign, 14 had no opinion, 26 were uninterested, and 11 were too busy to participate. The ratio of how the efficiency of the petition went, 19.6% of the time we obtained a signature when we went to a door business. But 61% of the time we obtained a signature when someone was eligible to sign. So that's about an average of how we usually turn out most of our petitions. There was one signature we disqualified because the business owner really did not put their clar name. I could not read the name of who the person was. Signatures, yeah, I understand that, but name, we didn't know that. So look at overall, 81 signatures were obtained, about 93.8% approval. Of the five signatures that were opposition, four sort of fit the needs and desires reasons. So a total of anywhere between 93.8% to 95% of the people were in favor of the Denver Beer Company obtaining a brew pub license. And I believe the needs and desires that come in are not being met. And the issuance of the license should be approved.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you for your information.
Mr. Doug Cunningham. Mr. Cunningham, can you please state your full name and spell your last name for the record?
Yes, it's Douglas Edward Cunningham, C-U-N-N-I-N-G-H-A-M.
And can you give us your title in relation to Denver Beer Co.?
Yeah, I'm a general manager at the organization, so.
And as a general manager, are you familiar with the day-to-day operations of the business?
Correct.
And this location, this is actually conversion of a current license?
Correct. We currently are trying to convert into having a brew pub license, yes.
And how long has this location been open?
We opened in November of last year, so.
And how many other locations does Denver Beer Co. have?
We have five other locations around the Denver metro area.
And approximately, how long have those locations been open?
The original location was opened in 2011 down on Platt Street. And then subsequently, we've opened in 2017 in Norvada. We opened in 2021 in Downing, '22 in Lowry Air Neighborhood, and then '23 here in Littleton.
And you're currently applying to convert all of those licenses to brew pubs?
Correct. We are.
And what's the impetus for that conversion?
What we're trying to do is actually serve the community better as we've seen the changes in the... Specifically, like the beer industry and where people are coming in, the ability to actually offer people more choices. Right now, with the way the licenses are, we are only able to serve beer at our locations. And seeing that we want to be actually create more community involvement and engagement is actually being allowed more people to come in and be able to experience the taprooms that we have in the areas, so.
And this location, as you've been preparing for this conversion, do you have food available now?
We do. We actually, 40-plus percent of our sales out of the existing location on Main Street is food right now.
And if this conversion were to happen, do you anticipate that percentage to be about the same?
Correct.
So then that would stay over the 15% threshold?
Correct.
What are the hours of operation?
We are open from, depending on the day of the week, it's gonna be from 11 to 9. And on the weekends, I believe it's 11 till 10 on the weekends, Friday and Saturday, so.
And again, if this license were granted, would that change at all?
No, it would not.
I want to talk briefly about the kind of customer experience when you walk into Denver Beer Co. When a customer walks in, you know, again, most people think of a brewery where we walk up and order at the bar. Is that your service model, or is there a hybrid bar and table service?
There's a hybrid bar and table service. We do both. So people have the option to actually go up to the bar directly in order, or they can actually have table service done for them, so.
And when it comes to ensuring that patients are over the age of 21, is there like an ID checked at the door, or when does that process occur?
Actually, the ID check will occur when that initial order is taking place. So whether or not they are at the bar, an ID will need to be shown there or to the server placing their order at their table, so.
And does Denver Beer Co. have a policy as it relates to checking IDs for people under a certain age?
Oh, yeah, we actually are gonna check everybody that comes through the door to make sure that they actually are over the age of 21, so.
And do you have a policy as it relates to vertical IDs?
We do not take vertical IDs.
What about expired IDs?
We do not take expired IDs.
And then when a... If a patron like walks in with a group and sits down at the table, and one person comes up to order, you know, like three drinks for the table, how does that ID policy work?
We need an ID for every beer that we're gonna be serving to an individual, so.
And what about your training policies for your employees?
All employees that are working behind the bar, serving, are actually certified tip trained, so.
And approximately, how many employees is that?
Across the entire organization? At this location? At this location, I would say that it's about, well, it's gonna be, we have about 40 employees between front and back of the house. And I would say it's gonna be 25 front, back of the house, so.
And in addition to tips training, do you guys do any in-house training?
For just... Yes, we do. Like, our GMs are gonna do that as well. All new hires have to go through all that type of stuff in terms of service, yes, so.
And do you inform your patrons, or sorry, your employees of what the consequences would be if you find, you know, they're violating those ID policies?
Oh, yeah. They actually know that if they do violate those ID policies, they will... There's a possibility, if not will be terminated of employment, so.
And this location, does it have a patio?
It does.
And how is that patio enclosed?
There is a pergola enclosed structure around it with the fencing around from the street, both on Prince and on Main Street, so.
And is that patio, can it be viewed or monitored from inside the premises?
Correct. Yes, there is a... From there, the bar is actually faces out to the patio as well as the inside. So anybody at the bar can actually see everybody out on the patio as well, so.
Those are all the questions I have. The authority may have some follow-up for you.
Thank you. Gentlemen?
Mr. Cunningham, just to make sure I understood you right, you said that all servers and bartenders are tips trained?
Yes. We don't have specific runners for... Or, sorry, we don't have anybody that's gonna be running alcohol to customers that is not tip trained. So that will be a bartender behind the bar or a staff member.
And you mentioned that the three other locations are gonna be doing the same process?
Correct.
Are you responsible for those locations as well?
I work with the general managers directly with those, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the very thorough presentation and for joining us tonight. A couple of other questions. First one, have you had any issues at this Littleton location so far with needing to cut off any patrons? And how have you handled that?
Not that I know of at this location. We have had it other ones that we have actually cut off patrons that have been over-served, that we've actually asked them to leave. If we do have a problem that they try to leave, we've actually have called for, if they're in no condition to drive, we have actually provided services for them to get home safely as well, so.
Great. Yeah, you just touched on my next question. A little outside of our kind of scope of usual criteria, but I was curious how you might handle patrons that are clearly...
We've directly had that, and we've given our staff the authority to do that because we do not want to have any occurrences for any patron that comes in through any of our locations, so.
Great. Thank you.
I know you mentioned that you've applied to convert the other locations. Are any of the other locations currently operating under a brew pub license?
They are not.
What is your current best-selling beverage?
Depending on the location, I mean, if you're talking about like which style, it's gonna be either like our colchis is gonna be one of our higher ones, or depending on the location and IP. But what we're finding is the lagers are doing better across the board right now, so.
How do you anticipate the change in licensing will affect?
I would assume it's gonna be the same. You know, I think where we look at this is similar to what a lot of the breweries have done that either are offering just regular brewing license that are offering seltzers. What they're doing is they're trying to offer options, and seltzers is the same product or made the same way as beer, so it falls under the same license. What we're trying to do is just create an opportunity for more people to come in and experience it with their friends, with their families, and be able to get the food or wherever else, and experience the events that we want to putting on, so.
What's your favorite menu item?
The food? I mean, I think we, like, from a food standpoint, like, what we're doing down here is great with the flat pizza, but the burger. And then I'm, you know, probably our juicy freak from our beers menu is my favorite, so, yeah.
Thank you. Is there a public comment? I'd like to open public comment.
State the time.
6:50. At 6:50 PM, I'm opening public comment. Seeing that no one has signed up, is there anyone else? Pam? Would you mind stating your name for the record, please?
My name is Pam Chapman. I live a block and a half from here. And therefore, I live, you know, two, three blocks from this location. I didn't get a chance to look at the petition, and I feel that there are plenty of bars. You have heard me, actually, this body has heard me say before, that I think we have too many bars. And I've asked about whether we, as Littleton, could create some tool to say that there are enough in a certain area. I will quote, because I think it's a matter of public notice, that one of the car repair places on Littleton Boulevard said, "Last car repaired before a bunch of bars." And that's the truth. Going into downtown Littleton, I think it's losing some quality and therefore, you know, as a nearby resident... And I know folks who live along the side streets who are impacted by parking. We don't have enough parking in downtown Littleton. And so I... And this patio actually takes the parking that the bank used to have, which was also, I think, part of the historic merit of the site. Car culture had a bank there, a building with a parking area, and this patio is on top of that. So I think this takes from Littleton in many ways. I think we have plenty of... But for this body, I think we have more than enough drinking establishments. I am not in favor of changing the license, and so that's my input. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing no one else, I'm going to close the public comment portion of the public hearing at 6:53 PM. Does anyone have a motion for me?
I move to approve LC Resolution 06-2024, which grants for Denver Beer Co., Littleton LLC DBA Denver Beer Co., 2409 West Main Street, Littleton, Colorado 80120. A brew pub liquor license subject to approval by the Colorado Liquor Enforcement Division and based upon the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood, the desires of the adult inhabitants as evidenced by petitions, remonstrances, or otherwise, and all other reasonable restrictions that are or may be placed upon the neighborhood by the local licensing authority.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? In that case, I'm gonna call for a vote. Please cast your vote.
The vote is for, in favor, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
The next item on our agenda is LC Resolution 07-2024. Approving a liquor license application for Quick Trip Corporation doing business as Quick Trip 4237 at 2338 West Bellevue Avenue, Littleton, Colorado 80120. Is the applicant present?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you so much, council members. Corey Tipton, I'm counsel for Quick Trip Corporation, Attorney Registration Number 35865. And I have two representatives from the company with me this evening to give you some background on the company and answer any questions you might have.
Perfect. Will they join you at the podium?
I also have a third witness who's our... Was the neighborhood independent surveyor?
Perfect.
If you want to swear all at the same time.
Yeah, that's what I was... Thank you. If you'll raise your right hand and answer this question, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before this authority... If you'll raise your right hand and answer this question, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before this authority is truthful? Thank you so much. And when you come up to the podium, please just state your name and possibly spell your last name for the record.
Brittany Sikorski, S I K O R S K I.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thanks for having us here today.
Of course.
I'll give a brief introduction and then I'll pass this over to our store supervisor, Lydia Hernandez. Quick Trip was established in nineteen fifty-eight. We are privately owned company and we are not a franchise. We have a little over a thousand stores across the US and growing. We have about thirteen here in Colorado now. I have worked for Quick Trip for eleven years. I started as a part-time employee and worked my way up the ranks to now being in real estate. My story is just one of the many examples of how Quick Trip is a career for people and not just a job. Store managers work Monday through Friday, five to three, and make a little over a hundred thousand dollars a year. 401K, ESOP, profit sharing, paid vacation and paid sick time. This location here in Littleton will staff a little over fifteen employees and which will hire in the from the surrounding community. Do you guys have any questions?
Can you just explain what you will be, what your license is, what you're trying to sell?
Yeah, yeah.
And where it's located?
Yeah, and actually that might be a better question for Lydia.
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to pass it on. I just wanted to get a brief introduction, yeah.
Perfect.
Background and then Lydia is more the operations person that's going to give you kind of the sales service, operational stuff.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Lydia Hernandez, H E R N A N D E Z. And like they said, I'm the store supervisor. So the big part of my job is just managing the store managers and making sure that they manage their stores correctly. But to answer your question, I believe it's called a malt liquor license, correct? So we'll just have.
It's a beer and wine, yeah.
Beer and wine.
It's actually a fermented malt beverage and wine.
And wine, yeah.
There we go. Thank you. But mostly just some beer and wine that we're trying to sell was the answer to that question.
Thank you.
If you want to go ahead and talk about your policy and your training practices around sales and service?
Perfect. So, yeah, from day one, responsible retailing training is a priority and a requirement for all employees. So we have in-store employee, in-store trainers, sorry, that train every employee and make sure that they pass that in order to work for us. There's always ongoing training after that and just corrections if needed. But we have policies that we follow. We call, sorry, card everyone that looks fifty and younger, just like the Colorado law states. And then if per se there was a mistake, there are policies to deal with any types of mistakes that might happen as well. And then, yeah, also, any questions, I can answer those, too.
And would, what kind of training do your, does your staff have?
So it's not the tips, I think, that most people are familiar with. It is similar to that, you know.
It's just not the tips branded. It's one of the other responsible vendor training programs. And you, if you want to talk about a little bit about the hours that are put in with that?
Yeah, so every part-time clerk would receive forty-six hours of training with a designated in-store trainer. Full-time people would receive anywhere between one to three weeks of training at full-time forty-six hours per week.
And then if you'll also talk a little bit about how you handle a sale to somebody who either appears to be underage or has maybe given you a card that's not looking valid?
Yes. So we do train that from day one, what to look for for intoxicated customers or people that might have a fake ID that they're trying to present. So we just look for the obvious signs of someone that's intoxicated. If we decide that, you know, we're not comfortable selling to them because we think that they're intoxicated or believe that they're intoxicated, we stand firm orders on our decision, remove the product from the counter, and we don't move forward with the sale and just end the conversation there. And then our POS system will actually scan every single ID. As long as it's like a state ID, it won't scan like a passport, but it takes a lot of like employee error out of that. They don't have to type in a number or anything like that. So the POS would scan it and tell us if it was valid and non-expired.
Thank you. Can you just talk about needs and desires, please?
Yes, absolutely.
Good evening, Carol Johnson, J O H N S O N for liquor licensing professionals doing businesses, liquor pros. Good to see you this evening. We are a neutral petitioning company, do not guarantee the results of our petitions. And we try to start at the location and radiate out in all four directions, if that is possible, for both the businesses and residents. Businesses and residents were started on Thursday, August eighth, and there were additional residents done on August twenty-sixth with two circulators. From that, we made eighty-two attempts at businesses and three hundred and twenty-four residents for a total of four hundred and six, of which we obtained one hundred and fifteen signatures. The breakdown on that was we had forty-four signatures and from the businesses, one hundred percent were in support. We had seventy-one signatures from residents, fifty-nine were in support, and twelve were in opposition. The reason for opposition, ten of the twelve gave no reasons for opposition. One felt there were enough or too many, and one felt there was no need. There were forty who did not, excuse me, declined to participate, eighteen not interested, nine too busy, five do not sign signature petitions or surveys, five had no opinion, and three were against business corporate policies. There were twenty-three who did not, were not qualified to sign, fifteen businesses did not have an owner or manager available, four were non-residents, and four were under twenty-one. So I do believe that this shows there is a need and desire for the neighborhood, especially since ten of the twelve would not even admit to a reason why they were in opposition to it. But I've been more than glad to answer any questions you might have.
Does anyone have questions? I'm going to open.
No questions for the needs and desires, but overall, a couple of questions.
Oh, please.
I was curious if maybe counsel or any of you could speak to, is Quick Trip Corporation registered to do business in Colorado? I couldn't find it in the Secretary of State's website.
Yes, and I actually believe it was in the application packet, the certificate of foreign registration. It's an Oklahoma corporation that's registered as a foreign jurisdiction corporation within the state of Colorado.
Under the name Quick Trip Corporation?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, it's not on the Secretary of State's website, so that's a little interesting.
That's interesting because we got, we pulled the certificate from their site for foreign registration, so. I can pull it up or I can provide another copy if you need.
Yeah, that's all right. Then could anyone speak to the liquor license violations? They were in other states. You have a lot of locations, I understand, so that's a much bigger volume than some of our other cases, but.
Right, so understanding they've been in business since nineteen fifty-four, it's, and that they have over a thousand stores nationwide. When you look at the aggregate of it, there has not been anything here. And it's a pretty low percentage when you think about the volume versus, you know, the number of stores across the country. If you've got specifics on how those are handled in terms of internally, we can certainly defer to Ms. Hernandez. They have a secret shopper program. They also have internal policies on how disciplinary actions are handled with employees up to and including termination if it warrants depending on the infraction.
Great, thank you.
You bet.
I'm curious if you can just share with me, like, where is the nearest liquor license adjacent to that property? Do you know who your nearest competitor would be?
As far as another convenience store, so something that's a fermented beer and wine, I don't believe there was any in proximity within the radius that the liquor pros worked on. There was others, other types for sure, but just not that type.
No, I think Scott answered a lot of the questions I was curious about. When I first looked over your application, I kept thinking, whoa, whoa, whoa. Seemed like there were some missed questions, and I found all the attachments about the violations and all the other locations and those things, so. That was my, my initial concern when I first read it over, and thanks for addressing those.
Perfect, thank you.
Ms. Hernandez, you mentioned that your POS systems are set up to scan IDs. Are they set up to scan the Colorado digital IDs?
Yes, they are.
Awesome, thank you.
Anything further? Okay, I'm going to open public comment. Is there anyone who signed up to speak up behalf or?
Sorry, no.
No, that's okay. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Yes, Pam? I'm opening public comment at seven oh five, sorry.
So I'm still Pam Chaburn. I live three blocks from, a block and a half from here. And I happen to live between the Denver Brewing Company and this proposal location. I would have to cross Santa Fe to get there, and it's a little bit further by Bellevue. So I've, Quick Trip proposed for three locations in Littleton. And so I will say I've been to those neighborhood meetings. The first one is up on Broadway that they proposed. I think that they're not going to that location, but they are at the, what I call the answer property on Santa Fe and then this location. First off, we have, we don't need liquor stores on Santa Fe. I live near Santa Fe. I hear the racing motorcycles all night as a whole bunch of other people do. I'm not the only person to observe this. And so we don't need people on Santa Fe stopping at Quick Trip to get their fast beer stuff and then drive. I, I don't think that makes Littleton safer. And so from the point of view of needs and desires, no, we shouldn't have a place on Santa Fe to quickly get beer, to dive in, pull in, and then, you know, there's park in the Santa Fe area there. People can just park and drink, and I don't think it's a good thing at that location. Also, Bellevue is designed for the eating and drinking to be combined on the street. It's a community area, and that's what Littleton's character is. And putting this here changes the character of Bellevue. I have been against it, and it's also too near the river. We shouldn't have a gas station near the river, which you don't need to deal with. But we shouldn't have alcohol at this location because of the character of Bellevue as well as the Santa Fe pull-in-and-out risk. I think it is not making the community better. And so I would like to just have that as my public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public comment portion of the public meeting at seven oh seven. I'd like to call for a motion if there's one from the board. Go for it.
Motion to approve LC Resolution zero seven dash two zero two four, which grants for Quick Trip Corporation, DBA Quick Trip four two three seven two three three eight West Bellevue Avenue, Littleton, a fermented malt beverage and wine liquor license subject to the approval of the Colorado Liquor Enforcement Division and based upon the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood, the desires of the adult inhabitants as evidenced by petition, remonstrance, and otherwise, and all the applicable restrictions that are or may be placed upon them, the neighborhood by the local licensing authority.
Do I have a second? I'll second. Is there any discussion on the motion before us?
I just have one more question for the applicant, if I may.
Sure.
I'm sorry, who seconded?
I did.
Thank you.
What, out of your thousand stores, what percentage of those are currently selling beer and wine?
As far as I know, all of them.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion?
I'll just bring up, I know I asked about this of the applicants. I'm a little concerned I can't find record of them in the state. I know you mentioned having that certificate. I didn't see that in the application. Pardon?
Did you maybe put a C in quick?
Q U I K.
Q U I K?
Trip, all one word.
It's not showing up under Q U I K. It's, you can find some if you put a C in it, but I wasn't finding it.
I'll double check.
So if you have that? Yeah. Hold on one second.
Here, working with, in this industry for twenty years, there are many times that there are many people's LLCs that are not showing up on Colorado's website.
Yeah, I just had that issue the other day.
People walk, walk up every day and there will be people that aren't there, but I know the business has been there for years. I'm not sure what work of it is, but it's not very uncommon.
So I've got in front of me, and I'm happy to send it over to you, it's a part of the application packet that is on the download for tonight. And it's page in the PDF, overall, it's page thirty-three as far as, as far as Adobe qualifies it. And it's the statement of foreign entity authority for an Oklahoma corporation. And then right after that is the certificate of fact of good standing. And then also the state of Oklahoma certificate of incorporation. And I'm happy, if I may approach, I'm happy to show it to you or?
Sure.
Yeah?
Wendy, my application's only twenty pages. Am I?
Yeah, we don't provide everything in the package.
Perfect.
It's vetted by SAG, though.
Okay, I apologize. I didn't realize. So there's the foreign entity.
Okay, thank you.
And then there's the certificate of standing from Colorado and then the Oklahoma.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Anything else on that that I can help with?
No.
And just to be clear, so Wendy can make it part of the packet, what page was your original?
It's thirty-three through thirty-seven.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any further discussion?
No, thank you.
Great, then I'm going to call for the vote. Please cast your vote.
The vote is four in favor, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you all very much.
The next application on our agenda is LC Resolution zero eight dash two zero two four, approving a liquor license application for Mannings Two Inc. Doing, doing business as Manning's Steaks and Spirits, fifty-one West Dry Creek Court, Littleton, Colorado eight zero one two zero. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Would you mind stating your name for the record and spelling your last name, please?
Michael Manning, M A N N I N G.
Thank you. And would you mind raising your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before this authority is truthful?
Yes.
Thank you. Would you like to present?
So we're just a family-owned and operated restaurant. My mom started in this industry when she was very young. We opened up a sports bar called Fiddlesticks in Lakewood in February nineteen ninety. And two thousand and eighteen, we opened up the Steakhouse in Lakewood off of Alameda and Kippen, going to be like the major cross streets. And since then, we have moved down to Littleton, and we're here, thanks to Colleen over here. I might have someone who likes the food. She's like, you need to come to Littleton, so I am here. Well, yeah, we're just a family operations. My grandpa's still involved from the, for the day-to-day stuff. He comes in and he makes all of our tabletops. Our steaks are delicious. Everything's made from scratch. It's awesome. Can't wait for you guys to come down and try it.
Thank you. Do we have questions? I'm going to just begin and ask about your staff and where the, I'm assuming you have a bar as well as a restaurant area, or am I incorrect?
Yeah, so both restaurants will have a bar area. A lot of people like to, like, single, you know, people traveling. They love to sit at the bar. Going back to hearing a couple of these other people talking, our GM at the current location is a tip certified trainer. So we go down that route as much as possible with as many people as possible. Our turnover rate, which I'm actually really proud of, we haven't had to hire a new server bartender at our current location in over a year and a half. So that's pretty cool, so. But, yeah, going back to like the tips certified training, we'll be doing most of that as well.
And it looks like you have a patio, is that correct?
Ah, yes, the location, the Dry Creek location does have a patio.
And is there a bar at that patio? I can't, it looks like.
No, there's not a bar. There's like a little fire pit on the corner, but there's not a bar.
Right. Okay, that's what I was trying to figure out, if those seats were up against a bar or if they were something else.
Yeah.
And so you, if you're, if someone orders a drink on the patio, the server goes in, is that correct?
Yep, so we'll have like handheld devices that if they can take orders out there, they'll shoot it over to the bar. They'll go to the bar, grab it, and bring it back out.
So most people in the seated area would all be served by? So, most people in the seated area would all be served by a person?
Yep.
And then, the only place would be the bar where people could just order at the bar?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yep.
Great. And the liquor storage that's off the kitchen here?
Yes.
Is that locked up?
It is locked.
And it looks like there's only one egress, am I wrong, or is that two? Is it one door or two doors?
To go into the liquor storage room? Just one door.
Just one door, okay.
Yes, correct.
There's like, is that a table that's up against the liquor storage?
I'm not exactly sure what picture you're looking at. There's so many different areas and like, things have been getting moved around, so can I, if I can look at, I'll explain it better.
Yeah. I don't know. Yeah, there's two chairs up against the wall, so I didn't-
In the liquor storage area?
Right up against the door.
Yeah.
Of the liquor storage.
No, you're fine. Oh, so, no, that's, sorry, that's actually gonna be where we put, it's a cook-and-hold oven, so I don't know why it looks like that. Yeah, that's, yeah, so we have the big banquet room, so we have to put big cook-and-hold ovens right there.
Fantastic, thank you.
Sorry, I was like, I don't think there's chairs there.
It's either chair or a bed. I went with chair.
Not sleeping there, I hope not, at least.
And are you currently open right now?
No, we are not.
And when do you anticipate opening?
Shooting for November first.
November first, excellent. Questions?
What are your hours gonna be there?
Eleven AM to nine-thirty PM.
Thank you. I probably heard some questions about TIPS training earlier. Can you speak to some of that?
Yeah, so my general manager at our current location is a TIPS-certified trainer, so she takes care of all of that stuff for us.
To train all the employees, the servers?
Yeah, trying to train the bartenders, servers, yes, correct.
Bartenders and servers?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
That was one of the bonuses of hiring her on.
What percentage of sales is alcohol versus food?
I would say, I think we're probably like eighty percent food, twenty percent liquor, and it could honestly be more like ninety percent food. But I would say, we'll say safely eighty percent food, twenty percent liquor, beer, wine, mainly wine.
Thank you for joining us tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
Similar to one of my other questions, I was curious, do you have customers that sit and drink for a long time, and, you know, how do you handle them if they start to become too inebriated?
I would say, for the most part, no. Yes, you're gonna have your one in a few, it happens, you take care of them, you make sure they get home safely, and I was kinda glad to hear that Denver Beer Co. guy say that like, hey, we put people in Ubers and send them, because we started doing that as well, just for those exact reasons, like, you can't be chancing anything these days with anybody. So, our general manager and AGMs are really good about that stuff. Yep.
Carol, could you present, please? Thank you. Needs and desires.
Carol Johnson for Liquor Pros. Once again, we are a neutral petitioning company, do not guarantee the results. This petition, businesses and residents, were done on Monday and Tuesday, August nineteenth and twentieth. We made one-hundred-and-eighteen attempts at businesses and three-hundred-and-twenty-seven at residents, for a total of four-hundred-and-forty-five. From that, we obtained one-hundred-and-twenty signatures. We had fifty signatures from businesses, all in support, and we had seventy signatures from residents, once again, all in support, so one-hundred percent in support of this liquor license. We had forty who declined to participate, seventeen too busy, ten not interested, ten don't sign petitions, six businesses that's against our company policy, and one no opinion. Of the thirty-eight that were not qualified, twenty-three were businesses that did not have an owner or manager, nine were under twenty-one, four did not read or speak English well enough to participate, and two were non-residents. So, I do believe with one-hundred percent in support from both businesses and residents that this, the people in this area do feel there is a need and desire for this restaurant to have a liquor license, but I'd answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Thank you. And I'm gonna open the public comment portion of the public hearing at seven-twenty. Do we have anyone on, that's, nobody's signed up, okay? Is there anyone in the, Pam, would you like to join us at the podium, please?
So, I'm Pam Chadbourne, and I do live a block and a half from here, which is not near this location, but since QuickTrip proposed this location before, believe it or not, or close to it, I was at some of those neighborhood meetings, and there was a lot of preference for keeping the restaurant use at this site. The hundred percent indicates that. People want this to be a restaurant use, it was built as a restaurant use, it fits really well in the neighborhood, and with Littleton Village, many residences across the street, it fits well. This is an example of, yes, needs and desires, this fills that. It's good at this location, and it's the right kind of business here. I'm glad, I don't know if the owner's around, but I'm glad that they found these folks to be in this, in this site. It's good for Littleton, and so, licensing authority, I think you can approve this and meet your charter. This does fulfill needs and desires of the neighborhood and community. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wanna speak? With that, I'm gonna close the public comment portion of the public hearing at seven-twenty-one, and I'm gonna call for a motion, if there is one. Oh, I'm so sorry. Please, ask away.
Mr. Manning, can I ask a few more questions?
Yes, absolutely.
Am I correct, is that the former Olive Pit location or Dirty Pit?
Yes, I guess they were open for like two months or something, I don't know much about.
Yeah. What concerns do you have about the facility?
So, I don't really have, so basically, when we came into this, I'll give you just a little rundown how this whole thing even happened. So, we've been looking, trying to come to Littleton for a long time, and I think it's good that the Dirty Pit was there and the boardroom was there, because the owner of the building, we called him forty times and sold it to us off-market. So, we ended up acquiring the whole property, probably because he was sick of dealing with the stuff that was happening. And a lot of the stories that I've heard from a lot of the people that either went there, or the neighborhood, or the previous owner of the building who was leasing it to those guys, I don't think that it was much of like them running a business as much as it was their hangout. So, we're just excited to actually give the neighborhood what they really want.
That was very helpful, thank you.
Yep. Thank you, guys.
Any other questions? Anyone have a motion?
I move to, I move to approve LC Resolution zero-eight dash two-zero-two-four, which grants for Mannings Two, Inc., DBA Mannings Steaks and Spirits, five-one West Dry Creek Court, Littleton, Colorado, eight-zero-one-two-zero, a hotel and restaurant liquor license, subject to approval by the Colorado Liquor Enforcement Division, and based upon the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood, the desires of the adult inhabitants as evidenced by petitions, remonstrances or otherwise, and all other reasonable restrictions that are or may be placed upon the neighborhood by the local licensing authority.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Is there discussion on the motion before the board? In that case, I'm gonna call for a vote. Please cast your vote. Thank you. The vote is for, in favor, the motion carries. Congratulations, Reagan. Thank you. Reports. I'm asking for, is there any reports from the deputy, for the city attorney, city clerk?
Nothing from me.
Great. Commission members, do we have any reports?
I wasn't trying to-
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Now, I forgot what I was gonna tell you. We don't have anything on the schedule just yet for next month, so we probably won't have a meeting in October.
Thank you. Commission members, do you have anything you'd like to report? Okay, and I have nothing to report, so therefore, I'm going to adjourn this meeting at seven-twenty-five PM. Thank you, everyone, for your time tonight, and take care.